Good evening. At 7:00, we'll call the meeting in order. Karen, would you take the roll, please?
Commissioner Young. Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Keen. Commissioner Brink.
Here.
Commissioner Kubal. Commissioner Steeler.
Here.
And Chair Gerard.
Here. We do have enough participants tonight to have a quorum, so we can make decisions that will be binding tonight, even though we have three people missing. We have the required quorum to make decisions, so if you'll bear with us. I ask if you're able to please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Chair is looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented or with changes.
If there's no changes, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as is.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. It's a nonevidable motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Chair is looking for a motion to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from the June 22, 2022, meeting. So moved. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Item number six is 9686 210th Street Court, a variance application for impervious surface maximum. We will hold a public hearing and consider the variance application. The way that all of these will work tonight, there's three public hearings tonight. Everything will work pretty much the same. We'll do one, two, and three in order. And first, the city will present the application as they understand it. Planning Commission members will then ask any clarification questions, et cetera. Once those have all been answered, we will ask if the applicant would like to address the commission and add anything that might have been missed. And we may possibly have some questions for the applicant to make sure we understand it completely. Once that is all settled, then we will move to the public hearing part. And that'll be a formal public hearing that we will hear all parties. I will give some more instructions at that point. Once that's over, we'll close that, and then it'll come back for further discussion with the commissioners, and then decision will be rendered. So with that, Nathan, are you presenting?
Yes, Chair, I am. All right. So thank you and good evening, members of the Planning Commission. I'm going to put a visual on the screen. This is a survey that was provided in the staff report. This is just for visual reference. We'll flip back and forth between the surveys that were submitted. So this variance is in front of the Planning Commission. It's a request to deviate from the established standards for lot coverage in the shoreline overlay. I would remind you that the standard for...
Excuse me. It was taking me a second to get it.
Okay. All right. Now we're moving. You got us all panicked up here for a second there.
Well.
Yeah, the COVID era has a Saltec concern. So what you can see here on the screen is a certificate of survey that was submitted by the applicant. And this is, this specific survey is showing the existing conditions that are present on site. They are proposing to completely demolish and reconstruct a home on this property. And I'll show you what that is proposed to look like in a moment here. As background, this property is zoned for a single family. Again, the variance is a request to deviate from the city's impervious surface maximum or lot coverage maximum of 25%. So you're allowed to have 25% impervious surface on a property in this shoreline overlay So this particular request came from a building permit review that the zoning department was reviewing, identified a, that the proposed conditions would exceed the 25%, which is allowed by the city code. That was identified to the applicant's builder. Staff did at that time communicate that it would be possible to simply approve the request if it were basically revised to show that less than 25% of the property would be impervious. The applicants decided to move forward with a variance request as a way to be able to construct what they have proposed. And so I'm going to show you here a proposed conditions survey. So just to kind of summarize the work that would take place on the site here, that would include the demolition of all of the existing structures and impervious surfaces, which you can see on the existing survey, which I've just flipped back to. So I'll go back to the proposed survey. You can see that the footprint of the house will get a little bit larger, nearly 1,000 square feet larger. And there is a significant reduction on, in concrete specifically, there was a, basically a lake access on part of this property that will be removed, which takes up a lot of the impervious surface on the site. So in a review of this particular request, staff did find a policy that the city actually passed in February of 2009. This is not a policy that staff were aware of previously before reviewing this particular request, and it was something that was identified through the review process, actually sort of in the middle of it. That policy allows for alternative pavement surfaces on specifically residential lots. It allows for a reduction or a credit of 50% of the lot coverage that would be taken up by whatever these alternative pavement systems are. And what I mean by that is basically things like pervious pavers. There are some other pavements or, you know, permeable asphalt is an example of another system that may allow water to percolate down through it. And so it could be considered as applicable under that policy. So a credit would be given for certain surfaces that are approved by the city engineer. And there are, in this policy, requirements or criteria that the services need to keep up to current engineering standards and do require maintenance over time. The reason that staff had previously not allowed for pervious pavers and things like that is that those systems require regular maintenance in order to continue to allow water to go through them and then, you know, thus qualify as somewhat permeable surface. So we identified that policy and identified that it is actually still in effect. So it was passed in 2009, and we have had our legal team provide a, an interpretation that it is still active. And so therefore, we reviewed this application accordingly. So in the staff report, you can see a review table that summarizes the impervious surface that's existing on this property. There's, on the existing conditions, you can see the concrete takes up the vast majority of their square footage. And their proposed conditions, the house would be the largest area of impervious surface. And so their existing conditions are 38.1% impervious. What they're proposing here is bringing it down nearly 10% to 28.9% impervious. Although I remind you that in cases where there's a complete, basically redevelopment, where there's scrape and rebuild, the expectation of the city code is that these properties are built within the existing standards that are established in the code. So that would be 25% impervious in this case. So 3.9% over that. So staff have provided findings of fact in the staff report that are essentially taking some of the language that we've received from the applicant and their narrative. In addition to conversations with their builder, we're providing these for your review. These are important part of the variance approval process because variances need to meet certain statutory criteria in order to be granted. This application was presented to the city engineer for comments. Nothing has been received at this time, although I would remind you that in, specifically in residential contexts, these building permits are reviewed for grading before they are issued. Public Works Director did not have any comments on this one. The Minnesota DNR is always, we're required to provide them with this, similar applications to this one. They did not have any comments, or at least they haven't sent anything at the time of writing of the report. And Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed did also receive the application and provided some comments to that or in the staff report, specifically that there will be some permitting required as a part of this project if it is approved. So lastly, I would just mention that we did receive today a public comment via email, which I have provided to members of the Planning Commission and the applicant here this evening. We can read that off for you in the public hearing. So that is all I have for you. So my recommendation as staff would be to review the findings of fact for this particular request against those that are required by the city's code and the state statute for approval of variance. And if the Finding Commission does decide to proceed with approval, we have provided some recommended conditions of approval.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Ken?
Nathan, my question is, as a city, if we allow pervious surfaces, whose job is it to check on those pervious surfaces over a period of a year or two to make sure they continue to be pervious surfaces?
That is a good question. So and it's something that was contemplated by the policy that was passed in 2009. That was a policy that was adopted via resolution. And one of the requirements within that policy is that there are mandatory inspections by the city every three years. And so that is the opportunity for the city to inspect the quality of the system at that time and ensure that it does meet the, basically the engineering standards that allow it to function properly. If it doesn't, the city would have the ability to require maintenance.
Would that be the same, then, if there's rain gardens and things like that?
So rain gardens are sort of a different mitigation strategy. And so they're not quite the same as using an alternative pavement system. So if someone was proposing a rain garden and still had over the impervious, we wouldn't be able, through that policy, to permit the impervious. So this policy is specifically adding flexibility only for cases where people are doing pervious pavers or similar systems.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question for staff. Again, this is my only third meeting here, so this whole pervious surface thing's gotten new to me. On the requirements, so the city has a requirement of 25% maximum. Can you tell me where that comes from?
Yeah, absolutely. So the city's shoreline overlay ordinance is adopted as part of actually a requirement of the Minnesota's DNR. The state has adopted rules that require all municipalities and counties to have shoreline overlay ordinances where there are public waters in the jurisdiction. And so Forest Lake has a lot of public water, and so it has to establish this or adopt the ordinance. The ordinance is pretty standard across the state. It establishes a 1,000-foot buffer from lakes, as one example. But there's always a buffer from a public water body of a certain distance. And so for lakes, that's 1,000 feet. And so the city has this as a buffer or overlay around the lakes in the city. And the shoreline overlay ordinance has a lot coverage standard within it that is also required by the DNR. The DNR has a...
So the DNR sets this 25%?
That is correct. So the DNR establishes rules, and those rules are turned into a model ordinance. And periodically, cities are required to adopt and update their ordinances as those rules change.
So, and this variance request went to the DNR. And even though their, their hard copy boilerplate says 25%, and this is 28.9%, they had no comment?
So the DNR, they were, they're provided opportunity to comment. In, in, one area hydrologist is, is the staff at the DNR for large areas. And so these are very common applications, which they will receive opportunities to comment on. My understanding, and that's just my understanding, is that in some cases where they're not commenting, they are simply, they're not, they don't want to kind of get in the middle of various applications, for whatever reason. It might be that that's the case. It might also be the case that they just haven't had the time to review it, but they haven't had the opportunity to comment.
And the Comfort Lake Watershed District also reviews this. And why, what's their, I mean, they're concerned about water quality, but what's, what's their reason for reviewing these?
So they're a kind of a partner jurisdiction, you could say, of the city. They have the authority to review basically projects within their jurisdiction, which includes a portion of Forest Lake. And so they actually are a permitting authority as well as the city for developments. And residential new construction is one example where they need to receive a permit from both the watershed and the city in order, in order to proceed with their project. And so they're allowed to comment on, on applications.
And last meeting, when we had a similar type variance request, the primary reason for this existence in the, in the code was, or at least was, I think was stated by someone that the hydraulic flow from the water of a hard rain or what have you, concern over lake levels rising in a, in a quick manner. Is that the reasoning?
Yeah. So if you, yeah, if we remember back to our previous conversation, there may be a number of different reasons why a lot coverage standard is adopted. One of them is to slow the water down across surfaces. So as you have more hard surfaces on a, on the land, water tends to really speed up and run really quickly through our stormwater system. That's seen as a negative because it tends to pick up more pollutants, and it's just deleterious towards the environment. The other, so there's, there's water quality concerns. There's also aesthetic concerns. And part of the reason the state has a shoreline overlay ordinance is to, is to conserve some of the state's natural resources. And so having a lot coverage standard helps, helps to cut down on hardscape and development on our public waters.
Okay. I think that's all I have for staff until we go further, and then I'll keep going. You missed me last week.
I did. I was on vacation. It was a sad Wednesday for me. Other questions? I have one for you with this, every three years they get inspected. Well, let's go kick the can down the road 20 years. Homeowner sell, we get a new buyer. They decide they don't like pavers, and they're going to put in a driveway. They just go rip it out and put a driveway in because we do not require a permit in order to replace your driveway. What is going to prevent that from happening?
So one thing that is required through the policy is that there is an agreement that's recorded against the property. So there is some way to understand that these, that an agreement was, was entered into between the property owner and the city. The other thing is, the city does have a driveway permit as part of its zoning permits. And so the city does have an opportunity to review, review properties for, for this particular issue when that comes up. But your question is a good one. What, how are we supposed to manage these things over time?
That's my only concern. I'm sure that we got talent that'll somehow figure it out, but, but I know that when I replace my driveway and I need a permit, so I'm nervous that the next person inadvertently, innocently rips out the pavers, puts in what they want, whatever that is, asphalt or concrete. And then we end up with 32% impervious instead of 25. That's finally, or 33% impervious. That's my only concern. Other comments to staff?
So is there no other recourse in this situation where down the road, like he says, that would be, you know, they could just add that on? Is there something that could attach to this that would trigger or flag it in the future when the property is sold or purchased, you know, by a, by the next person?
The, the property, if the variance is approved with the policy in place, the property owner would have to enter into an agreement with the city that the maintenance would occur. We'd inspect every three years. And that gets recorded against the property and the chain of title. So any future owners would be bound to this agreement as well and would come up at the time of closing. All of this would be discoverable in the county's record.
Okay. And meanwhile, the inspection would just keep continuing every three years despite the change of ownership?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions to staff?
I do have one more question on this pervious surface. On the, so in the DNR's boilerplate language, there's no consideration for the slope of the lot. There's no consideration for the soil conditions of a particular lot because every lot in Minnesota is different. Sometimes you have sand, sometimes you have clay, you have silt, and it can vary greatly, and the slope can vary greatly. All will affect the hydraulic flow of water across the surface and penetrating down and into the lake.
Yeah. So I guess the only response that I would have to you, and Abby is welcome to join in if she has more to add, but the shoreline overlay ordinance has this standard as one of, a number of various requirements that kind of regulate or provide areas or guidance for development. So the lot coverage standard is one standard. It's not perfect, you know?
Right.
It's not doing some assessment of soils and how water percolates down through them. There are definitely some regulations that have to do with steep slopes and things like that to avoid erosion of bluffs and things of that nature. So there are some checks to where development can occur in relation to steep slopes, and there's, there's some prohibition against just removing all vegetation. But these things only kind of, there's a number of standards that work in concert to control or provide criteria for the, for development.
One additional question, I'll ask it now, maybe it's appropriate later, but if there's an easement between the edge of the road and the property, clearly the property owner, nobody's going to build on that, especially on a road of this nature, is that, obviously it doesn't come into the calculation because it's not their property. However, it seems reasonable, if it's, you know, 12 feet by 100 feet, that it's certainly a permeable surface and could be. But I'm just throwing that out. I don't know if that's ever been considered or if it's a...
Yeah. So in terms of how staff review for that, they, that doesn't enter into the calculation. It's simply the, the area of the lot that is depicted on a survey.
Okay.
And so a surveyor is the one that is responsible for providing us with measurements of lot area in addition to the hard cover that's proposed.
Okay. No more.
Okay. No more. All right. Would the applicant like to add anything? You're more than welcome. We asked if you do, please come up to the lectern, state your name and address for the
I'm Tom Buzinski with TJB Homes, and this is, somewhere is where it is, our engineer, our engineer Kent. And been working with the Caruths who bought this house and been living there for a while. They also own businesses in Forest Lake, too, and they want to make this their forever home. And it's going to be a slavengrade. I don't know if you saw the picture. Did you put a picture up of the house at all?
We don't have elevations included in the staff report.
Was there? Okay. So one of the big things here is there was a lot of concrete, and there was an access down to the lake almost. And we're up to 38%, which is there. And now as we crunch this thing down to get to 28 using the permeable, and again, remember, as you said, we're only using 50% of the permeable. If we could use 100%, we're right at that 25% number. So we've created all these things, shrunk them up, got, got it the way it should be. We did, when we originally started with this, kind of looked at the watershed because some of the interpretation, looking at the code, was can we provide an alternate solution for it? And we actually did, Kent spent a bunch of time laying out rain gardens under our original part and did calculations and all that, and for a possible rain garden down. Now, Nathan, last week I got a notice that if we got through all this, that there was going to be a watershed permit, so, which we weren't aware of on that one. And Kent has, I'll let him present that here in a minute, too. So we had actually laid out a rain garden layout to make this work also. And generally, and I don't know how Comfort Lake is, did you find out, do they record it? I know in Scandia, we've got two going, actually three houses, and they do a recording. It's easement recorded, and they come on and, and look at it every whatever year or two to make sure things are being maintained in the rain gardens. So, and in regards to the rain garden and the permeable pavers, Donnie Caruth owns a landscaping, big professional landscaping business here. So he knows what he's doing on all this because he's going to handle that part of it. So, so we've covered all the bases that we can to make this all work. We're down to within, based on 50% within 3%. So do you want to talk about the rain garden if we got with the watershed part of it?
Yeah. So the...
Excuse me. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, no, sure. Ken Brander, I'm with Civil Methods, the engineer for this part of the project. Yeah, so like Tom was saying, we're basically notified that if the variance is granted, then the other element that we would need is the permit from Comfort Lake Forest, Forest Lake Watershed District. And that actually requires, with regard to hydrology and hydraulics of the site, you know, their standard, they have a few more standards or a few more things that need to be addressed that we went through just to make sure we'd be able to do that. One of those being the rain garden, which basically the rain garden is there, or the rain garden is required in this case because with the redevelopment, even though the impervious area of the project is, you know, less under proposed conditions than it is right now, because it's reconstructed, the Watershed District requires treating a certain amount of volume from that impervious surface. And because the reconstructed area, this is a Watershed District policy, but because the reconstructed area is more than half of the original impervious area, that means we have to treat the entire impervious area that's going to be there afterwards. So that's basically what the rain garden is there for. The, and so the rain garden meets the volume control requirements, which is basically sort of a surrogate for water quality requirements of the watershed. So that kind of goes beyond, I would say, even the, kind of the city standard in that regard. The, the watershed does also do the maintenance declaration for both the pervious pavement and the rain garden. So there's a, there's a maintenance plan. It's recorded against the property for both of those practices that are basically considered water quality practices. The, I would say overall, not just because of the reduction in impervious area and the use of the pervious pavement and the rain garden, if you put all those things together, I mean, the project is clearly a benefit for, with regard to sort of lake water quality, hydrology, that kind of thing. So if that sort of goes into the, you know, determination of whether the variance makes sense, I think that's kind of definitely a valid point. There are a couple other items that were, we've made sure to address kind of ahead of time, just anticipating the watershed permit, which, you know, is, I know, separate from this, but sort of aiming at the same goal of improving the hydrology and making sure the project doesn't have a negative impact on the lake. You know, the watershed requires that the, the flow rates, the peak flow rates for different storms from the project be reduced under proposed conditions, which we are able to do, or which we do do because of the, largely because of the pervious pavers being used. And, yeah, I mean, I think that's basically it. The, the other thing I would add, yeah, the, with the pervious pavers, when they're installed properly and maintained, which they would be, you know, they really, they really provide a lot of infiltration. They, you know, they definitely, like the watershed considers them pervious surfaces. They don't have the 50%. They don't use that, the 50% sort of standard that the city has in place. It's, it's just considered pervious surface because of, just because of the effectiveness.
Well, they are used in a lot of big commercial projects, so to get their water to move. Questions?
Questions of the applicant? We do have commercial sites in Forest Lake that have pervious, like Keys is the one that comes to my, the Keys Taco Bell. Where else?
Yeah, that's right, that whole park.
Oh, and Jimmy John's. I think I hit all the restaurants now, so. Been to them all, so. That's probably the biggest one that I know that retail like that. And I'm sure we have others. So we are familiar with them. This will be our first residential. And that's why there were so many questions at the beginning is that this is, we just want to make sure we understand it. Questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I noticed on the plan, this is from the surveyor, not from your architectural drawings or what have you. There's no dimensions on the porches or the covered, but I did check the areas. I scaled it and checked it. The areas are accurate and they're stated on there. But it might be good to put those dimensions on there for the city.
It might be on another one, so.
And my other question was, what is the construction of the porch?
The porch is actually a room. That's a four-season room, so.
Oh, it's a four-season room. It's enclosed.
The cupboard is a roof over patio, so.
Okay.
Other questions? Thank you, may I have more for you after the public hearing?
Okay.
This is a public hearing. The way this will work this evening, we will officially open the public hearing. We will ask anyone who would like to speak to this application, please come up, state your name and address for the record, spend a couple of minutes giving us your thoughts on this application. Once we have heard everyone, we will call one more time if anyone else would list to speak. We will then close the public hearing. At that point, it'll come back just to the commission to make a decision. So we will open the public hearing at 7:31. Does anyone wish to speak to this application? Karen, is there anyone online or...
Well, I do have Gary Lee and Laura Evenson. If either of you would like to speak during this public hearing, please raise your hand in the chat and I can move you over to allow to speak.
Meanwhile, we do have a email from one, excuse me, one neighbor. Are we going to read that into the record or just include it as part of the record or...
Yeah, I'm going to read it into the record. So this says Nathan, was directed to Nathan, and is from Carlos. And I do apologize if I don't get the last name correct. Carlos and Abby Jimenez or Yamanez, J.I.M.E.N.E.Z. Carlos at NadiaCakes.com. Our notes and concerns, we support the project provided, we support the project provided the following. Number one, they have any water flowing away from our property. Currently, a portion of their driveway drains into our lot due to clogged drains. This extra water in a limited area has caused erosion of the beach on our property. Number two, that they take efforts to minimize the debris of the demolition from hitting our home. Number three, lastly, our home was built in 1934. We took great care in its rehabilitation to save it. We ask that they minimize extreme ground vibrations due to heavy machinery driving at a high rate of speed when moving next to the house on their concrete driveway if possible. We wish them the best of luck on building their new house. Thank you, Carlos and Abby Jimenez.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to this application? Yeah, anybody online?
No one.
Seeing no one come forward and no one online, we will close the public hearing at 7:34 and bring it back to the commissioners for further discussion and decision. Commissioners?
My one question is, again, just looking at the criteria with the variance, of course, we always have to look at that, looking at what the actual difficulty, the practical difficulty and what that is. I'm not sure if I'm seeing that. And also see about the plight of the landowners due to circumstances unique to the property, not created by the landlord or landowner, I'm sorry, which this seems to be created by the homeowner, in my opinion. So again, that's the two things that I'm looking at right now.
I would concur. I struggle with this application from the standpoint of it's really a fairly large lot on the lake at over 15,000 square feet. I couldn't tell you the last time we've seen a variance application for a lot size this large on the lake. Most of the time we see them, it's in the sub 10,000 square foot range. So I have a real tough time based on just the size of this lot. I think that they can get down to 25%. And to your point, Nathan, see as the plight is becoming the homeowners or the applicants in this case because they are exceeding the impervious. So I really am not in favor of this variance. I think with a couple of tweaks, they can get it down to 25%, is my opinion.
How many square feet? Do we know how many square feet it would take to get it down to 25%?
About 600. If I did the math right.
And my only discussion point would be, I think they've taken care in, with the pervious pavers. And again, you know, the DNR looks at it differently than our city does. If they put in the rain garden, I think that's going to make a substantial difference as well and deter water from flowing into our storm sewer as rapidly as it might. So I think they've taken good care, but yeah, it's tough when it's a completely new build.
And like I say, I think it's on a reasonably large lot relative. But I'm only one opinion.
My difficulty with shutting this down over 3.9% basically is the soul, where this 25 comes from and what it's... If this was a developer coming in front of us, someone who's educated, knowledgeable, and making a decision based on dollars of profit and loss of building, I expect him, I expect a developer to understand and know that 25% before they come up. But if someone's buying a home, they're going to make their dream home or what have you, this kind of hits them as they're doing it, and oh, they didn't know that. We're talking 3% or 600 square feet. I look at the additional 12 feet of grass essentially that's between the road and their property line that we don't get to count for, or they don't get to count for their permeable surface, but it's there. And that road's not going, it's not like Highway 97 that might get expanded. It's there, that's grass. The, that 25% that just drawing a hard line on, you know, when we talk about things like setbacks from the water, that's absolutely a hard line. It, to encroach on that adversely affects your neighbors, right? If they're exceeding this 25% by 3.9%, are they adversely affecting their neighbors?
I don't think that would, I don't know if that would necessarily be right or not. I think the biggest thing is that we're dealing with a large lot. We can't really rely on ignorance because if someone came to us and said, hey, I'm just going to build this massive house and leave about, you know, 10 square feet of grass, we can't just say, oh, I guess we didn't know about that. I think granted, there is a small, I mean, 25, you know, to whatever is 3.9%. It is small, granted, but we're not dealing with a small lot and a very awkward placed home. That's been, you know, I guess that's where I'm coming from at least, that there are options is kind of what I'm seeing.
And there are homes built on the lake every year. I'm fortunate enough to live on the lake. And every year, there are multiple homes built on the lake. And we rarely see more than one variance a year. And these lots I know are smaller lots. There's three down the road from me, and all of them manage to do it.
Okay.
Without having to come and get a variance.
So they've, so it's pretty rare that a, again, this is my third meeting, so it's pretty rare that we'll push the envelope on this 25% to...
Well, I think in a lot of cases, they come to the city and after having discussion with the city, they understand that we're trying to hit the 25%.
Okay.
And they go back and they get there, one way or another.
Okay.
And, you know, and...
I mean, that's why we're here, and to have this discussion, so.
You know, and we've seen driveways that have been two strips of concrete in order to get down to that 25% instead of having a full driveway. So again, nothing against the size of the house. If they want to put a second story on there and add more upstairs, they're more than welcome. But it, so they can get that 600 square feet if they need it. They just would have to build it up, in my opinion. And we're not here to design or structure by no means. But I think that when we get to these bigger lots, I tend to hold to the 25%. I'm one of seven, one of four tonight. Further discussion?
I'll make a motion. I'm going to make the motion that we approve the applicant's request for the variance of 3.9% above the impervious surface maximum for a total impervious surface area of 28.9% with the three, I'm sorry, with the four staff conditions.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I have a second, I have a second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
No.
We have a 2-2 split? Am I correct on that? Yes, Abby?
Do you know what that means?
I always get confused when it's a split, if it goes which way.
It fails for a lack of a majority, so the motion does not pass.
Okay. Now I need to know, hey, this is the other part, you know, and... So do we need a second motion to get definitive, or do we just send that on?
The vote was made. It was a 2-2 vote. The action was taken, but the request is denied because of a lack of majority.
Okay.
I do believe our code does allow for applicants to appeal any decision made by this commission.
Okay, so with a 2-2 decision, we deny the variance. And the planning commission is the final decision, but there is one exception. If someone does not agree with that decision, they have one week to notify the city that they disagree with the decision that was made. And then it will go in front of the city council and they will render the final, final decision. So I see, I'm looking right at the builder there. Am I clear there? Okay, thank you for attending this evening. Item number seven, classic construction. It's a conditional use. Permit application for Bridge Academy Childcare. We'll hold a public hearing, consider conditional use permit application, and we have a site plan review. And I'm unsure who's doing this, is it?
That would be me again.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. So Bridge Academy has applied for a conditional use permit and site plan review on the subject property. The subject property is made up of two unaddressed parcels located in the Headwaters area. These are located at the northeast corner of Headwaters Parkway and Headwaters Boulevard. And so these two parcels are to be combined. And the entire new site developed to be the new home of a childcare center named Bridge Academy. The zoning district for this area, these parcels, is the neighborhood commercial district. They are also within the Headwaters Master PUD overlay. And again, as a reminder, that Headwaters Master PUD was approved in 2006. The future land use for this property is mixed use from our cities, from the city's 2040 comprehensive plan. So the zoning code requires a conditional use permit to operate a licensed daycare center in the neighborhood commercial district. So that is why the planning commission is reviewing the CUP request. The land use appears to be compatible with the comprehensive plan as well for that mixed use guidance. So I'm going to bring up the site plan of the proposed childcare center. And I'll zoom out so everyone can see. So overall, this is a 2.6 acre site. And the site plan has been reviewed for a number of various standards. And so at a previous meeting, we had a site plan review where we were kind of wondering, what is a typical site plan review look like? Look, what does a typical site plan review look like? And this is a pretty good example of one. So we're looking for lot size, lot width. We've checked those boxes with this lot combination. The setbacks for this particular zoning district will be met by the proposed site. And most of those standards are exceeded by a fair amount. The building will only be one story, so about 19 feet tall. And this does not exceed any impervious limitation on the site. So when we receive a site plan review request, we look at a number of different factors. We look at both the proposed building design in addition to various components of the site plan. So in terms of a review of the building design, one of the categories that we look at is visual interest. And so there's a number of different criteria that a site plan has to have in order to be considered to have visual interest. This does meet those criteria by having a number of those listed in the staff report or conforming with those. Building design is also an area that has to adhere to several different criteria. Examples of those include articulation of the facades into more house-sized segments, having some scale that is basically similar to surrounding properties. In addition, staff reviewed for finishes on the building itself, on the facade, those building materials and the accent materials that are allowed as well by the city's zoning code and design standards. Those are met by the proposed, by the proposed elevations. And I'll show you here what is being proposed on site. So the elevations of the building are shown in color here. I would note that this is not completely up to date. This color rendering does have some slight, there are some slight differences where we ended up on the elevations that were included in the packet in black and white. So the color is simply to show you some of those colors of the building materials that would be proposed for this building. The actual proposal for different materials is found on the screen here in this plan, from the plan set. That was revised. In terms of other building criteria, building roofs, you can't have anything that's not screened from the public perspective. This particular building may have some mechanical equipment on the roof that's visible from Highway 61 possibly, but that would still be considered to meet the criteria for screening of any rooftop equipment. So in terms of site design, I'll go back to the site plan. And we can see that they have proposed some parking, which would run along Headwaters Boulevard. They have a sidewalk and pedestrian circulation system, which will connect to and through both the parking lot, but also to a mixed use trail that runs along the north side of Headwaters Parkway. They also have several different playgrounds, which are proposed on this site to accompany the indoor classrooms that will be used for the childcare center. Those playgrounds are proposed to be screened by fencing. They're actually required to have fencing around them by code. Lastly, just as a feature of the site to point out is there will be some stormwater ponding on the west side of this site that would run along or be visible from Highway 61. So landscaping is required by the city code. This site plan was reviewed for whether it meets those minimum landscaping requirements that are established in the city code. The only area that it did not appear fully consistent with the criteria was simply the number of required over-story trees. And so the code actually requires, there is a calculation provided in the city code and you can find that in detail in the report. Effectively, they're short just a few trees, eight to be specific. And although they show an overall number of plantings that would meet the number, appear to meet the number of trees on site, if we're looking specifically at over-story trees, which is how we read the ordinance, we're missing a few trees. So staff recommend that the applicant revise their plan to include the required trees. So staff recommend that the applicant revise their plan to include the required trees and correct species for over-story trees. Other than that specific detail, the number of plantings and the location of those plantings appears to be of, appears to be well thought through and of quality design. In terms of lighting, there is lighting that's proposed on the site. There will be some freestanding lights that are, that light up the parking area, as well as lights that are affixed to the building. All of these lights would need to be downcast and shielded from shining upwards. It's only shining down. And in addition to that, no lighting can exceed a maximum height of 25 feet if in a parking area. The trash enclosure is located on the northeast corner of this property. That would appear to be consistent with design criteria for such structures. Signage that's proposed on the facades does also appear to be consistent with the city's sign requirements. And so the, effectively, the zoning review for such signage can be accomplished through the site plan review. And lastly, parking, I'll flip back to the site plan. The applicant is showing a total of 46 stalls. According to the city code, staff understand there is a requirement of 33 stalls for this particular use. And so the applicant is providing more stalls than are required by code. Lastly, staff were asked for comment on this particular application. The city engineer did provide a review memo that has been, can be provided to the applicant. The public works director also did provide some comments on street lighting in relation to Headwaters Boulevard. The city's fire chief also provided some comments on this one. Those are in relation to fire hydrants. And so we would suggest that any requirements of city staff be resolved prior to issuance of the building permit. And then lastly, Rice Creek was offered an opportunity to review. We didn't receive anything in particular, although we do understand that there will be a watershed permit required for this project. So staff articulated some of the required conditions for approval for site plans and conditional use permits in the staff report. As staff, the recommendation is that, it appears this is consistent with both the required findings for a CUP and then those criteria that are required for review of a site plan. So staff do recommend approval with conditions. And those conditions are outlined in the staff report for you numbered one through 12. So I have provided some example motions that you may consider in the report. I'm happy to take any questions. I would also note that the applicants are here if you have any questions for them.
Any questions to staff?
Looking at the east elevation, that's the one most visible from Highway 61. There's no fence shown there. And the only reason I mention that is because in the plan view, it clearly shows that there is a finished metal fence that goes along that entire elevation. So as long as the city's aware of that, that look is not going to be that look. It's going to have a fence with rather, with its childcare facility, it's going to be rather tight spaced bars on there. So I just thought I'd mention it because it doesn't show on the elevation.
Yep, that's a fair comment. Staff did note that the, any materials used for that fencing would have to be consistent with the city's design standards. So we do understand there would be some instances where there could be some other improvements on site that would be in addition to those which you see on the facades. And we would ensure that there is consistency and compatibility with those materials.
Other questions? I have one, Nathan, and I'm just want some clarity. It looks like you pointed out there's a sidewalk going through between the parking lot and the building?
Yep.
And then is that also a sidewalk on Headwaters Boulevard? I was having a little trouble.
Yes, there is a sidewalk that runs north to south on Headwaters Boulevard. As a, as a note for you, Headwaters Boulevard hasn't been fully constructed yet all the way north, but this, this portion of Headwaters Boulevard is there currently and existing. And there is a sidewalk running north and south on this side of the street.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, we would invite the applicant, if they would like to say a few words about their project. You're more than welcome to come up and speak. If not, it's not required, it's up to you. We don't bite, just to let you know. That's fine. Do we have any questions for the applicant? We may after the public hearing, so. All right, this is a public hearing. So we'll open the public hearing at 7:55 PM. Does anyone wish to speak to this application? We ask if anyone wishes to speak to this application, please come up to the lectern, state your name and address for the record, and spend a couple of minutes telling us your thoughts. Karen, do we have anyone online who would like to speak, or any emails that need to be read in?
No emails, but again, I have Gary Lee and Laura Evanson online. I think they're just watching. But Gary or Laura, if you are interested in speaking during this public hearing, just indicate that in the chat function, and I can move you over to speak.
I'll ask one more time, does anyone wish to speak to this application? Don't all rush at once. Seeing no one come forward and no one wishing to speak online, we will close the public hearing at 7:56 PM and bring it back to the commissioners for their thoughts and decisions. Commissioners?
Can I ask a question of the applicant?
Certainly.
I guess in light of all of the tragic events that have been happening in our world, my question to you as applicants is what precautions are you taking as you build this building for security of the children in this building during the day when you're there?
Hello, Jessica Mulder.
Laura Samuelson.
So we are required per licensing to have an emergency preparedness plan that we work into the building design. So we have a system for getting in the front entry. It's locked at all times, along with all of the doors around the building. Parents have a key card in order to get in. And then within our emergency plan, it's built for, let's say, we have an intruder drill, which has kind of been a thing recently. We have a plan for that, so our staff are all trained. Children go to a specific area within the building. Furniture that's in the building is used to block doorways so that people can't get in as well. And then we have activities we do with the kids to keep volume down, again, so nobody can hear us. And then we have notification for getting ahold of like the police department and things like that. So there's different protocols we take based on our licensing plan and our emergency plan for the world we live in these days, unfortunately, so.
Thank you, I'm sorry to ask, but I thought I should do so.
We have actually had to run these drills before because there's other locations that we've had, and we've had somebody in the area that had held somebody hostage down the road. And so we've, we've actually used these plans. So we are pretty familiar with them, and our staff are trained monthly on them. So it's something that we do on a regular basis, again, unfortunately.
Just out of curiosity, how many other facilities in the metro area do you have?
Three.
Good.
Lots of kiddos.
Really, are you really going to have, did I see 40 infants?
Yeah, we are full at all of our other locations and have wait lists, and we have 35-plus infants at each one, and yeah.
I just can't imagine the work that entails.
Difficult job, but fun.
Do you need a day job because?
Come snuggle a baby?
Thank you.
Yes.
Other discussion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the conditional use permit request for the proposed Bridge Academy daycare facility. The PID is, do you want me to, should I read those out? PID is listed, subject to the conditions 1 to 12 proposed by staff.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I'll second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Any discussion at all? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
And I'll make the second motion to approve the site plan review request for the proposed Bridge Academy daycare facility and subject to the 12 conditions proposed by staff.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries unanimously. Welcome to Forest Lake. We hope it's a very successful project for you. We look forward to construction, I assume, commencing as soon as you can get a shovel in the ground. So good luck. Item eight, it's 190th Street North, Danager Minor Subdivision, PID 2803221430001. We will hold a public hearing. We'll consider a minor subdivision application. In this case, we are not the final recommendation. We will make a recommendation to city council, and we think they should proceed. So with that, I believe Franny, you're presenting?
Yes, thank you. City staff received an application requesting approval of a minor subdivision to split the unaddressed parcel located along 190th Street. The existing parcel is approximately 56.6 acres and it's zoned agricultural. The proposed subdivision will create two buildable lots, and the applicant intends to continue the agricultural use of both parcels and eventually build a home on the westerly lot. The two proposed lots are referred to as parcel A and parcel B. So parcel A is proposed to be 20 acres with 426 feet of frontage along 190th Street. Parcel B is proposed to be 36.6 acres with 500 feet of frontage along 190th Street. Both parcels meet zoning requirements of the minimum lot area of 20 acres and a minimum lot width of 300 feet. In the staff report, I do apologize, there is a typo. Parcel A in the chart table is supposed to read 20 acres for lot area and 426 feet for lot width. And parcel B is supposed to read 36.6 acres with 500 feet for lot width. So again, I apologize for that. The proposed lot split and zoning district are consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. The application was sent to city staff for review, including city engineer. City engineer comments were included more as conditions of approval. A 75-foot easement dedicated to the city for purposes of road, trail, drainage, and utilities shall be required. Five-foot drainage and utility easements around all sides, side lot lines and rear lot lines as well shall be dedicated, and the application shall require a wetland delineation. So that, those are the comments of city engineer. No comments were received from the public works director nor the fire chief. We did receive some surveyor comments, and those are included as conditions of approval. So those conditions reflect those comments. Rice Creek watershed comments include that this action requires a permit, but only a simple review is required at this time, and the applicant was notified of the need for that permit. In regard to parkland dedication, the Parks, Trails, and Lakes Commission will review this minor subdivision proposal on July 20th to discuss parkland dedication requirements with the applicant and make a recommendation to the City of Forest Lake City Council. Upon staff review, the proposed minor subdivision request does not appear to meet any of the criteria established by the subdivision ordinance for denial of the application. So for staff recommendation, the city staff recommends approval of the minor subdivision request to create two lots from the existing parcel located along 190th Street, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. So pretty short and sweet for you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. The applicant is also here as well.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Hearing, seeing none, having none. Would the applicant like to say a few words? We ask if you do, please come up, state your name and address for the record.
Luke Danager, 2507 Yellowstone Drive, Hastings. It's my wife and I's goal with our twin boy and girl to move up here and be involved with my family's farm. And our land lies right next to my parents' farm, and so that's our goal is to split it off and build a house. So I appreciate you guys' consideration with that, so.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. We will officially open the public hearing at 8:05 PM. We ask if anyone wishes to speak to this application. Please come up to the lectern, state your name and address for the record, spend a couple of minutes giving us your thoughts on your application. Does anyone wish to speak to this application? Karen, do we have anyone online or any emails to read in?
Same people online, nothing in the chat, and no emails to read.
Thank you. I'm never quite sure what's a reasonable amount of time before you close it. I feel that at least a minute should go by, just because then it looks like we did due diligence, so. I'll ask one more time, does anyone wish to speak to this application? And there's no one online that now wants to speak?
There's no one.
Seeing no one come forth or no one online that wishes to speak to this application, we will close the public hearing at 8:06 PM, bring it back to the commissioners. I will remind the commissioners that we are making a recommendation to city council this evening, so keep that in mind when you make the motion. Discussion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to recommend to the Forest Lake City Council to approve the minor subdivision application per the staff recommendations 1 through 7.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. So this will now move to city council, and they will make the final determination. And that will be on the meeting on?
Yeah, Monday, the 25th of July. But we also have a meeting next week with the Parks Commission before we get to the city council, the last week of the month, so.
So there you have the two dates. We'll move to item number nine, which is downtown plan recommendation. We have a multiple of people who could present, and I really don't know who is, or.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the lead here, Chair Gerard, and if I need backup, I have it. But I think I got it, I do. I got it. So in March of 2021, the city's Economic Development Authority started a process to develop a downtown plan. So this had kind of been a long-range goal, I think, both of the EDA and the council, to develop some sort of guiding document for the downtown area so that we could kind of define what we wanted to have for our downtown area in the future, and that could help us guide both public and private development. That little over a year prolonged process included a 15-member committee of residents, business owners, local government representatives. I think Commissioner Young, that sits on the planning commission, was actively involved with that committee as well. They met one time monthly, they had three different open houses, and engaged in the community in a variety of ways, including going to local civic club, meeting groups, arts in the park, those sorts of things. As this commission may know, the idea of a plan of this nature is a high-level aspirational plan. Where do we want to be in 10, 15, 20 years? We plan for the future, and that's, that's our hope of where we want to be. Without that plan, sometimes development can, both public and private development can just end up being too hodgepodge. So this plan identified 11 planned directives. Those directives are different activities. Those activities focus on redevelopment options, parking options, wayfinding, pedestrian amenities, and broke it down into an implementation schedule identifying the actual activities that. identifying the actual activities that would occur in four different subsets. So there's projects that are catalysts, so maybe quick low-hanging fruit that might help spur new development. Short-range projects that are, we hope that it can occur within the next five years. Later-phase projects within the next ten years. And some that are very opportunistic. If the timing is right, if the funding is there, if the partnership is there, we'll be able to do it, but it may not ever happen. We hope it'll happen, but it might not. The high-level plan is included up on the screen for you. This really is the meat and potatoes of the plan. So this, many of the members of this commission have been around planning commissions and seen plans developed and sometimes they get really thick and it really usually comes down to a map or two that really deciphers what it is we're looking to do. So that boundary, I think if I remember right, and forgive me if my map skills aren't the best, but it isn't second to second, I was thinking it was second to second. Do you know the northern boundary, Mayor?
Third, I believe it is.
Third? It's up there and down here. Centennial to the river, that was the project boundary. To the, thank you. To the lake. It still comes out every now and then. The plan calls for a downtown loop trail and that's that kind of yellow identifying, just kind of a trail that could get people connected from Hardwood Creek all the way around the park or through the park. There would be also a lakeside parkway that kind of helps separate some of the traffic from the parking right now when you kind of drive into the...
I'm sorry, could you make it just a little bit bigger as you kind of go down?
Sure.
Thanks so much.
Yeah.
Perfect.
I will. That probably gets the most of it. The lakeside parkway, the idea here being is that we'd have a specific vehicular path that goes through the area right now. When you drive into the area itself, you really end up kind of getting lost in parking. This could let vehicles drive through, then access into parking as they needed. There's some redevelopment opportunity sites. These are just areas where redevelopment could occur. It's not saying that redevelopment is going to occur. Optional, and excuse me, I had highlighted the parking structures. The redevelopment areas are located in red. The optional parking structures that we're looking at, and those are parking districts, are options, there's three of them, one, two, three. We don't know necessarily what those parking scenarios look like, whether that be a ramp, a deck, just maybe even more surface-level parking. Those are just things, areas that we've identified for potential for more parking in the future. Do you have a question, Chair Gerard?
I do, but go ahead.
I don't, I should have said we could have had this as a free... Let me, let me quickly run through these and then we certainly welcome the answer, any questions you have. Retail centered or concentrated north of the roundabout. We'd be looking at some lakeside, lakeside improvements. Canoe kayak launch. We'd be looking at some riverfront restoration, some enhancements along the shoreline. We'd be looking at alternative locations and potentially an increase for transient boat slips through here, including in partnership or in consultation with the Your Boat Club docks. Big component of the plan is a lot of streetscape landscaping. Streetscape landscaping along Lake Street, along Centennial, along Broadway. We even want to see some landscaping further around and in the park system itself and around those parking lots, just to help create more green space. All in all, that just helps reduce kind of all that heat, that impact that urban environments can have. There has been discussion about a veteran's memorial and maybe potentially relocating the beach house in the future. And then also some more redevelopment sites on the south side of the property as well. One of the other areas that we'd be looking at, something that possibly be a public-private partnership is coming through here somewhere, I think it's listed on here somewhere, is a potential kind of wayside rest for the Hardwood Creek Trail. Something that can help visitors get off the trail, kind of almost like a visitor center even if somebody's driving in, but some amenities potentially for local residents as well to start that connection into the trail itself. So that's a high level of kind of the programming that we'd be looking at, again over that twenty-year timeline. Included in the plan is the, this plan, the entire text, as well as just some early project estimates. We included early project estimates right now. We are still looking too with our consulting team at how we look at financing, phasing and financing this plan. Right now, the city is not asking to finance this plan. We're just looking at recommendations to adopt the plan so that we can start looking at how we could potentially partner with or fund projects on this plan. Questions for me or else I am joined tonight with Mara Bain, Mayor Marion, if you have questions for either of us.
So, my question would be, what would you like from the commission tonight? Are you looking for a motion?
Tonight, we're looking for a motion to recommend approval or a recommendation to the council regarding the plan. Last week, the Economic Development Authority, Advisory Authority, did recommend approval of this plan. Next week, it'll go to the Parks Commission as well. Really, all of this is leading up for the City Council's formal consideration of adoption of the plan at July twenty-fifth meeting.
Thank you. Questions, commissioners? Kevin?
Abby, you mentioned something about a possible veteran memorial. My question to you is, there's currently a veteran memorial in the park? What would happen to that if you didn't have a veteran memorial?
Sure, it would, so the current veteran memorial is a paver-based system. And what the new design, and this was, the development of this plan was done in consultation with those that are working on the veterans memorial. The new veterans memorial is being designed in a circular fashion, so in a, I think a fairly similar footprint as the existing one. But what they'd be looking to do is actually remove those pavers and elevate them into an area that you could kind of see at a lower, at a higher, at a higher plane. The current Veterans Memorial Committee is, would really like to elevate these so that they get the pavers off the ground, the pavers aren't being walked on, that it really is creating more of a, a really more respectful place for the pavers and those that had served that are being memorialized with this. So there are design concept plans that were reviewed at two council meetings ago. And that is starting to, I think the Veterans Memorial Committee is going to meet next week to start talking about how they do a little bit more public engagement on the design of their memorial.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My second question is, you talked about phasing. Do you have any ideas on how you would phase this project? I mean, is phase one, let's say, to look at the possible removal of the DNR boat launch? Or is that phase ten?
No.
Do you know how that phasing might come together?
Yeah, so we do have in, in the packet, I'm not sure the page number, but in the plan, it's page number sixty-five that talks about those early phases, those later-phase projects. Some of this really does also hinge on just the timing of things. The current agreement for the DNR boat launch expires in two thousand and twenty-five. So we've had some preliminary discussions right now about doing a study to see if relocation, I don't think that one works, Mayor, so you can maybe just come share this. We've looked to, you know, we might start that study now to see if relocation is feasible, that possibly by two thousand and twenty-five, we may have secured a location. So we're working right now with our consultant to kind of do this really big puzzle. Like here's maybe some low-hanging fruit that we might be able to fund right out of our general fund budget in this next year. Here's some projects that could happen as redevelopment occurs in the next three to five years. But then there's others that we're kind of trying to schedule out that planning study phase in anticipation of something else coming down the pipeline.
The last page of the presentation lists, lists them by phase. So that would be kind of, if I read that, that's what they would be expecting to do early on, would be the catalyst?
Let me just see really quick here. Let me get, you said the last page of the packet, the last page of the...
Correct, one hundred and fifteen.
I don't, even though there might be listed in an order right now in the plan, we don't, we didn't envision that there would be a specific order for anything that would happen in here. So I think that where we have the kind of matrix here is just that these are all, so the top ones that are listed are all kind of catalysts. Those are maybe those low-hanging fruits or if we do this, it could spur something else to happen. It's not to say though that those would be all the things we would do first, but I think we'd start to look at that list there to see what could we maybe fund with some general fund dollars or other existing system that we might have that could help spur maybe one of those early-phase ones within a couple of years. Yeah.
Good explanation and I would just maybe add a couple of comments. So one, important to know that there is no funding that has been reserved specifically for any of these projects. And so just know that going in. The goal is to not show dollars with, we've also got a revenue stream identified and a funding source identified for all projects. The only point on putting dollars in at this point is really just to give visibility to scale and to also give visibility to some of the barriers that may just exist on achieving some of these objectives. I think that having the approval of the plan is a powerful element as we go into two thousand and twenty-three budgeting. And I would expect the EDA and City Council in two thousand and twenty-three to start to look at, assuming the plan is adopted, look at some of those initial projects and start setting aside some budget dollars to move those individual projects forward. The location of the boat launch and considering, do we do anything with the boat launch is kind of a keystone element of the plan that I would expect that if we wanted to consider that, moving forward in two thousand and twenty-three with a broader study of what might that look like? Everything from boat, boat trailer perking, moving just that to maybe even a full, you know, change of location of that boat launch. As Abby mentioned, there is some timing elements with the existing DNR contract. So some funding of that, I think we would expect to see sooner rather than later in early two thousand and twenty-three. But then also remember that with a plan or without a plan, downtown development is happening. And so with a plan approved and in place, that certainly gives a little bit of a different framework for some future development activity. We know that there is planned activity, for example, in the block that's currently the Gawn Block, the former Vanelle site. That plan may come forward to the city in the very near, near term. And having something like this in place just helps give some broader perspective on how those individual projects are going to work in our entire downtown district. So, long answer to say, everything is very high-level at this point. It's twenty years, it's a best estimate. And there are areas where the city can be a driver, like in considering the location of the boat launch. There are other areas where the city is going to be a partner with a property owner and an investor that is the driver. And, you know, the goal of the plan is to really provide some guidance and some direction and prioritization to staff, council and commissions for those future decisions. So, again, long answer to a short question, but I think it's important that it's essentially a plan to have a plan with individual projects needing to come forward with individual approvals, individual funding sources that then have to go through our city process, so.
Yeah, the main reason I asked was with the redevelopment, however it takes shape, and you're putting in the different parkways, the Lake Drive and the Lake Parkway, you know, we have a limited amount, as you know, parking there already. And when you have added boats and trailers and everything else, the businesses there have no parking. And even when we do an event like our fun events on Tuesday down there, Arts in the Park and stuff, there's no parking. And I know we're talking about doing the parking across the street with the crosswalk and things like that, all great things. That's the only reason I ask.
And that's a perfect example where the, kind of the city's component of that is partially to have a plan, but we're also reacting to where those develop, the where does that future development happen and also the timing of that future development. And so to your specific example, and you're exactly right on, the development of that parkland or that, that roadway that's going to essentially move traffic from the existing Vanelle site to potentially, if there's parking to the north, that becomes very important as that project comes into fruition. We're not in complete, all control of that timeline of when that project might take place. And that's just where having the plan in place just helps provide some discussion around where is parking going to be for that important site as that does, I would expect to redevelop, so.
Thank you.
Great question.
You know, we, I was born and raised in Chicago and even I have a little trouble crossing Lake Street. And I know there was a ton of comments regarding the roundabout. Now, we don't own Lake Street and we don't own Broadway. What is, has there been any discussion with the city or the county or the state regarding dropping the speed limits, doing something different there, et cetera, et cetera?
I'm not sure about historical conversations, but the county is starting a process to engage with the municipalities along Highway sixty-one to look at the corridor, the Highway sixty-one corridor. There has been conversations amongst, I think, the county and the state about a future turnback from the road from the state to the county. And this study really is probably the precursor to that. What do we need to see through these areas to make sure that if the county takes it back, that it's in a condition and that the communities and the county are comfortable and happy with? We do look in this plan about trying to narrow those down, those roadways down some and also have, and I'll never remember what the acronym is, but HOC, so a pedestrian signaled intersections that you are actually able to go up and have the blinking lights on both sides of the downtown area so that we can start to get people feeling a little bit more comfortable, pedestrians, vehicles can see that. The idea is, now that we have this in our plan, we can take this in those conversations with the county and say, this is what we want. A lot of times what will happen to communities if they don't have especially streetscape plans or pedestrian plans, when they're talking about infrastructure projects, roadway projects, is you don't end up getting the sidewalks you want. You don't end up getting the trees or the buffer or the maybe reduced speed limit because they don't have a plan. This plan will help us in terms of just sharing our desires, our community's needs and desires with the county and the state.
So would we be looking in more for something that's by the high school for crossing versus what's down? You know that one downtown that is the only one in the county and from what I understand, one of the few in the state? That no one knows how it works. You have to stop when it's a solid red and wait, I believe, and you can go after you stop on the blinking red and the yellow, you are supposed to prepare to stop. I tell you, I'm, I'm home before I realize what I'm supposed to do.
That is good feedback. And your reference to the roundabout by the high school is correct in that, that we would like to have that type of a system at the roundabout downtown. The, the system that we have for pedestrians at the high school is the only one in the state that's been approved by MINDOT. And so we just take that as, well, we were successful once, let's make the ask again because that has been a successful kind of means of, especially for, you know, this, this volume of kids that we have crossing that very busy roadway. It's not a perfect option. I mean, we had a lot of public feedback, to be frank, of, well, would you just remove the roundabout? We want our stoplight back. And we had to go into this plan with what's a realistic and the roundabout is likely a, for the foreseeable future, constant that we, is probably not going to go away. So we took the approach of if that is a immovable constant, what can we do to make it as safe as possible? Part of that is some sort of a HOC system at the roundabout itself as well as having a better pedestrian facility to the north that perhaps isn't as confusing as Chair Gerard mentions. Something else that can be done. It was, it does speak to some of the challenges of the plan though. So here we are, a downtown district trying to create the best experience possible bordered by land or bordered by facilities that we don't control with the state or the county. Even in a county turnback situation, it's not coming back to the city, it's going to the county. So that continues for sixty-one, that continues for Broadway. We've got the lake and all of the DNR considerations related to the lake. And so part of us having the plan is really just so we can be reaching out to those partner agencies, as Abby mentions, to really advocate for what we need and having a considered plan that's gone through this robust public process. Part of the reason why we're looking for the nod of approval from you is it's just an indication of it does have broad community support, so.
Other comments, commissioners?
I'm just, I only attended a couple of the, of the meetings and I didn't get a chance to get through the entire packet. But just a point of clarification, I was wondering, there were some comments about the downtown retail core. I'm guessing particularly the north end where, you know, there's a lot of buildings, historical buildings that people would like to see, you know, maybe looking better and that, you know, it does have some potential. Was there also something in the plan about giving the owners of these buildings incentives to, as to the issue of the alleyways and how they're wanting more closed areas to those who have those buildings to replace the buildings? Are those, are those incentives in this plan? Did I read that, or?
Overall, it's redevelopment incentives. So be that fixing up a building or potentially, you know, removing and rebuilding. Those are things that the EDA works on their policies right now at implementing. So far, we do have, it's a business, it's not a facade program, but in a business incentive program that offers four facade improvements. We haven't had anybody talk about full-scale redevelopment. Those would continue and the EDA through the rest of the year is going to be looking at those policies right now and kind of the parameters for those programs. I do know, it's kind of exciting, we have in our, our back pocket or we have about to happen soon, might not happen till spring, a pretty significant, small building downtown needs a nice facelift. It's going to get it with a new retail business. And so it's little things like this plan that I think the plan itself is a catalyst for attracting people that want to be down there and that will utilize those incentives, so. Did that answer your question, Jason?
Yeah.
To add on to that, so there's the long-term perspective and then there's also the low hanging fruit. So one of the elements of the plan is what can we do in the immediate, short term to help those property owners? And some of the, we have a, a fair number of alleyways or just pass-throughs that are very narrow between buildings that today are just grown up. We've talked about some, what can we do to either offer some incentive to clean that up? And then also perhaps use some temporary art or something to just make those spaces more visually appealing in the short term? Because there's just, oh, there's just a lot of room for some low hanging fruit and really just a crew to clean up some weeds and remove some debris, so.
Thank you.
This might be a better question for Nathan. The border that they have drawn around there, how close is that near our downtown district?
So are you referring to the MU1, which is the downtown mixed-use district? That border would be, the yellow border would be all MU1. And I believe that gray border would actually also all be MU1. And then that MU1 district would actually continue south along the 61 corridor.
Oh, so that's what that black and white line is, is the MU1?
I do know that our consultants did look at our zoning district and our existing EDA policies and the areas in which those policies are applicable. So we do have a downtown business incentive program. It does kind of follow along those boundaries of already the established programs.
Just curious. And I gotta ask you, Mayor, the PASIO, PASIO, P-A-S-E-O, did you come up with that word?
I did not. Where do you, where do you even see that word?
That, that's the walkway?
Oh, the pasao. Oh, the pasao.
What is that?
A pasao, it is a, it is a designed space to move you from one place to another in a pleasant experience. And so having a pasao, so the pasao becomes important if we're going to consider, pasao might be important for many reasons. But if we are going to consider parking on the west side of 61, the pasao would be that pleasant, walkable experience that you would have to get from the park into that parking space or into, into your parking space on the west side of 61. And then the thought is that there is some sort of a pedestrian facility to get you safely across 61.
You'd be like going to the Navy Pier and you got the nice big arches that you walk through.
I can't even say it. Do you want me to go walk through it?
So if you, and also if you, you know, if, an advanced feature of the plan. So we started to consider, how do we maximize the space available to us at Lakeside Memorial Park? The existing functionality and the existing infrastructure that's required to support the boat launch is fairly substantial and fairly impact to our use of that area and which prompted the consideration of, well, perhaps we should consider moving that slightly to the north of the downtown district. If we were to go down that path, you will see that that allows for consideration of different entertainment features. The current plan would have a band shell, which would kind of replace the existing entertainment structure and what we currently house at the gazebo. So if you were to have a band shell, the pasao is your, kind of your pleasant walking experience to get from parking to your concert in the park.
On the east side there, where does the, where is the pasao ending? It almost looks like it's in the middle of the street. Would it be kind of on the corner, the northwest corner?
Yeah, so, go ahead.
Your Lake Street coming through here, your pasao would end up kind of landing at that, that Lake Walk area or that Lake Drive that you have?
That parkway?
The parkway that would come through. So it would end kind of coming through to that parkway. I believe that there would be a sidewalk through there along that parkway, though.
So the pasao actually continues, I thought it was just the bridge that we're talking about, connect, connecting the?
So the bridge is overhead, pasao is ground level. So your bridge will come down to the sidewalk to the pasao to bring you across.
Okay, I guess I was wondering where the bridge is, where, I see, okay.
And all of that?
Go ahead, yeah.
All of that would be defined when we get there. There's lots of engineering and architectural design and community input and?
Cost, I mean, that, the bridge, anytime we're going to do an above-grade, above-grade crossing or a bridge is just going to add escalation on cost. And, and, and frankly, may or may not be important depending on, again, what that long-term parking option is. This is part of why having the plan is so important. The, to be clear, we have three parking options. The goal is we pick one, we don't do all three. And so, you know, depending on what option we choose, we may or may not need the bridge. The importance of the pasao may or may not be there. So there's, there are a lot of dependent pieces. And again, that's, those are us data points that we just don't know. We just want to have a plan that provides some options because development is going to happen in many different ways.
All right, we learned something about pasao tonight, so.
Okay.
We learned something about pasao tonight, so that's good.
I tell you, I can go home a happy man. Any other input that commissioners would like this evening or make any comments? Hearing none, I would make a motion to recommend to the city council to move forward with the downtown development plan as presented this evening.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
We'll move to our other section. And tonight, since we have the Honorable Mayor Bane here tonight, we'll ask if she has any further comments she would like to make.
So I don't have any planned comments other than just a general thank you for just the, I mean, of our, I've always said of our boards and commissions, the planning commission obviously is the hardest, has the hardest job and you have the most volume of meetings and pages of documents to review and just really appreciate your service. We at council see the effects of that through, coming through on what comes next on our desk. And we are, I'm just always like, the groundwork of what comes to us is always just really well laid out and just really appreciate your service. So other than a note of gratitude, I don't have anything further, but always happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions?
I will say, it is budget season, so should you have any requests or observations, I'm happy to hear those as well. We will be walking into a budget process. And so if you have something off the cuff that you'd like to add for consideration, always happy to hear it. Otherwise, if you think of something over the next couple of weeks, let's make sure that we've got that included. Our goal is to have a, well, not our goal, a requirement, is to have a preliminary budget passed by September. From that point, we can always bring budget dollars down between September and our final adoption in December. But we are not able to add anything to the budget after that preliminary approval in September. So if you're making considerations over the next couple of weeks, our goal is to make sure, obviously, that we've got the right staff, the right budget, the right equipment of what's needed to operate for 2023, and input's always welcome.
I guess I have a question regarding that then. One, I know one of the challenges that I think the city has that we hear about a lot of times is some of the things that we approve and, and we look at, sometimes there's an issue with enforcement because we don't really have a full-time enforcement person. Are we looking at something?
We don't even have a part-time enforcement. Kind of, we do, with all, with all due respect.
Are we looking at anything in the budget for that, as an example?
It's been considered many years, it's not made a final cut. Looking at just where we are with, to be frank, some inflationary pressures and current development activity, I'm a little pessimistic going into 2023 on allowable budget, kind of just what is our margin? We had, there's just a lot of pressures on projects right now with inflation and just things like the cost of asphalt skyrocketing. And there's just, I, I'm expecting a lot of pressure. I'm also expecting a lot of pressure on labor negotiation side related to just cost of living. And a lot of our costs are associated with some of those metrics. So I'm not sure this is the year that we crack the nut, but this is a, to be, to be frank, and, you know, this is a nut that we have not cracked for many, many, many years. And that creates community standards and that creates tradition. And unwinding that is going to be quite a task. And so we can't continue to kick that can down the road, but there's several cans that have been kicked down the road and we've tackled some of those. I'm just not fully confident that that is going to get top bill. But I suspect when staff submits their request, it'll be on there. And I think it's kind of one of those, we're going to have to see, where does that weigh out? We have had, we have made in the last couple of years some pretty sizable progress on some of our, kind of our maintenance kind of backlog. And we've, we've made some investments there, that's been helpful. But that also means that we've had some fairly more than minimal kind of increases to our rate. And so I, I just think that this is kind of that history coupled with some inflationary pressures. I think this might be a year of, let's let things settle down and let's just make sure that we know what's happening next before we make some additional investments. Especially as you're talking about adding headcount. You want that to be a position that we're, and be in a spot of, we're going to be able to support that long term. And I'm just not sure that's quite where we're going to be this year, to be frank.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor? Thank you for coming this evening.
Yeah, thank you all.
Abby, do you have anything for us this evening?
I do want to just piggyback on Commissioner Miller's inquiry and Mayor Bane's response. So within the first maybe a few weeks that I was here, I was asked to develop a 10-year staffing plan. I'm not sure what Administrator Casey thought when he saw 11 positions in 10 years. I think I've shared with this commission and with the council that the community development department is under-resourced. I don't think that that is anything that is too much of a surprise. We have started the process to re-advertise for Donovan's position, the city planner position. Donovan's position was city planner slash zoning administrator and the, we removed the zoning administrator. So there's some question right now that whether or not it needs a union contract amendment. We're working through that process. But I have also requested in the 2023 year, some administrative support for community development. The simple fact is, the combination of a variety of factors over the years has left a lot of the systems in place just needing more attention, that we really need more staff. So maybe someday you'll see somebody other than Karen sitting there. I think Karen might, not that she doesn't love you, but would, might appreciate that. I will note that it, it would be a couple of years out before I would see that the city could sustain somebody specifically for code enforcement. But I do think we've had conversations with the police department and they may be pursuing a community service officer program that could possibly help with some enforcement of things in the future. Other than that, I have also been in discussions with Patrick, Casey, the administrator, and our legal counsel, Lavander, to talk about doing some just commissioner training. I've heard that both the council and the commissions haven't necessarily maybe had some just formalized training in-house for a while. I know the League of Minnesota Cities has standardized, pre-recorded programs that I think everyone's encouraged to attend or view or read. But this would actually be bringing in our legal counsel to just kind of help bring some nuts and bolts of do's and don'ts and roles and responsibilities. It's really designed to help protect us from getting sued, probably more than anything. But that, we're hoping to hold that late this summer possibly, I'm not sure, but that date would be forthcoming for you. And then I did send out an email earlier this week, just some packet policy changes, some of the materials that we're not going to be putting in the packets, application forms, bill backs, some of those basic things. Those are available in our offices, but they're really just cluttering the packet materials. The idea is to get the materials to you that you really need to see to make the decision. I know that there was question about engineers' reports and also floor plans. I plan on bringing that up at the next meeting when commissioners, the other commissioners are there and we can have a little bit of a dialogue. Also think that there's some legal background and basis for this. The city doesn't necessarily have some of the disclaimers that traditionally would be acknowledging property for a property owner to acknowledge that the information that they're sharing with us and that we're sharing with the public is public information and out there in perpetuity. Floor plans right now, there has just been some concerns brought up in the private community about whether or not their floor plans of their particular homes should be available in city public record, online, searchable for the rest of eternity. So it'll probably be an ongoing conversation, but we'll chat more about it at, at the end of the next meeting when we can have a dialogue with more commissioners. Does that work?
Do we have a meeting in two weeks?
We do have a meeting in two weeks. We have two agenda items. One is a minor subdivision and another one is a fairly complex industrial development along Highway 97.
Questions for Abby?
And you will also have a meeting, I believe, the first week in August as well, so.
No breaks this summer?
No breaks.
First full week of August.
Summer vacation?
The, the first meeting in August, yeah.
Thank you.
No summer vacation.
Franny?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Nathan?
Yeah, just a really quick note on variances, just a thought that, you know, I, I'm having here as staff is we, we do our best to screen out variances that we don't think are appropriate. In some cases, we just can't screen everything out. We may have applicants who, who come in and they have the right to apply. And so, you know, this night is a good refresher for me as staff, is just a reminder to say, we'll try and work and redouble efforts with applicants on the front end to make sure that they are fully understanding what those statutory criteria for approval of a variance are. And I would encourage you to continue to, to review those required statutory criteria for approval and discuss them as, as a commission.
Well, the applicants have not changed in many years. They're going to always ask.
Did I read correctly in the packet that the criteria was, the wording was actually coming from the applicant and not from the, from the city?
Yeah, so the way that I worded the findings in the particular, in this particular case was as, as the case that the applicants were making for the findings of fact, which would support their request. We did not provide a, a staff recommendation for approval or denial here, looking for the planning commission to review the findings of fact here and, and decide whether it should make findings of fact supporting approval or supporting denial.
Is that going to be, so I guess helping to understand going forward then, is it, are we going to see more of that?
I think that?
It kind of helps me to see what the city thinks about its, you know, how it interprets. Not necessarily saying we think, you know, we should approve or deny, but it does help to?
I hear what you're saying, and I think that in the future, I would like to be more strongly worded in terms of a staff recommendation and a review of, of the statutory criteria. And I would defer to Abby on, on an opinion as well as the community development director.
Didn't Donovan kind of include both, if I remember right? If I remember right?
Well, when it was going to be controversial, or when it could be.
Yeah.
Normally, it would be a recommendation for approval or denial.
Yeah.
And, you know, when he had a, and prior to Donovan, you know, we've been with the city, and we voted against the city before, and I guess that's democracy.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just speaking neutrally. I mean, I'm not talking about Donovan particularly, but just...
No, I, I don't think we had those...
The options for how, how they can be put on there. I mean, it is a little bit confusing, I think, if it's just the applicant's wording and why is it going to be one or the other, is it going to be both or third, you know? So that's all I'm saying.
Commissioner Brink, I do think it's a tricky situation sometimes to be in. I mean, ideally, yes, staff wants to make a recommendation. You, the city hires us to help support you in understanding what is the request before you, what is the law we have to weigh that against, and whether or not we believe it conforms to the law. Because it really comes down to not whether we like it or whether or not it fits, or, you know, it's, doesn't meet the law in place. Some of them get kind of tricky, you know, this, this, I think the decision tonight before you was a little, one of those that could be a little trickier, and when we have to have findings of fact, and if we make the findings of fact that there is a reason for denial, and this commission says, no, there's others, then sometimes we end up kind of fumbling in a meeting to make those findings of fact on their record. So we'll definitely work to kind of say maybe an if this, then that type thing, but our recommendation would be to see if we can help kind of guide you that way.
Sure. Yeah, and, and a lot of it's just subject to interpretation, which, you know, we're going to have our opinions on, of course, but, okay, thanks.
You know, in the past, we would, at times when we denied something, get, the next meeting, there would be a letter or a declaration drafted that here's the findings of fact for denial.
Yeah, so there, there is a findings of fact form, which is associated with requests that are approved by the planning commission. And that's not specific to just variances, it, it applies to other applications that are approved at final, final approval by the planning commission. And, and there may be some cases where in order to specify or provide more detailed findings of fact, instead of, as Abby was pointing out, fumbling during a meeting, those types of documents could be brought back to the planning commission for, of, of review to ensure that the findings of fact meet the intent of what was discussed during the meeting.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions for Nathan? Karen?
No updates.
Justin?
Nothing for me.
Nothing?
Nothing.
And I have nothing. So based on that, the chair is looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and it's an non-abatable motion. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, commissioners, for your time and your service tonight, as well as the city's staff and our special guest, Mayor Bain.